Call a meeting to order, please. Jennifer, is there any changes to the agenda?
No, the agenda before you is the one to be adopted.
Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Motion second to adopt the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Need approval of the July 25, 2013 minutes, or if there's any additions or corrections, need to know them at this time?
Mr. Chairman, there's just one minor correction. And sorry, the case in Council Lady Allen's district, the developer's name is mislisted. It's listed as Todd Jack, and it's Todd Jakovic.
Okay.
Just to clarify.
So noted, we'll make that correction. Any other additions or corrections? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Just a second.
Second.
Motion second to approve the minutes of July 25, 2013, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those now are official. Council members in the audience that would like to speak at this time, further away.
Berkeley.
Where's Berkeley?
Berkeley, Jefferson, looking for someone.
Okay.
She's waiting.
Okay. Jennifer, any items to be deferred?
There's one item for deferral. It's item number two, 2013 SP dash zero two eight dash zero zero one. It's on page four, Lock Haven. A request to rezone from R forty to SPR zoning for property located at sixty fifteen Cloverland Drive and a portion of property located at sixty twenty one Cloverland Drive to permit up to twenty-four detached single-family residential dwelling units. The staff recommendation is to defer to the September twelfth Planning Commission meeting.
Okay.
Item two.
Item two, singular.
I did not have that on my mind, but it is. Pardon me.
Oh, okay. I heard it.
So only item two for deferral.
Only item two, okay. The item to be deferred is item two. Is there a motion to defer?
Second.
Motion second to defer, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Items on the consent.
As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within sixty days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. For the items on consent, a notice to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the Commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the Commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. Item number one is on the consent agenda. This is 2013 SP dash zero two six dash zero zero one, page four, Ninth and Cheatham Cottages SP. A request to rezone from SPR to SPR for properties located at nine oh six Cheatham Place, fifteen oh one Ninth Avenue North, and Ninth Avenue North unnumbered, to permit up to fifteen detached residential dwelling units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item three A, 2013 Z dash zero two seven PR dash zero zero one, page five. A request to rezone from RM twenty to RM twenty A zoning for property located at Wedgwood Avenue unnumbered. Staff recommendation is for approval. Item three B, 2013 P dash zero zero one dash zero zero one, also on page five. A request to cancel a portion of the residential planned unit development overlay district located at Wedgwood Avenue unnumbered, zoned RM twenty, and proposed for RM twenty A. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number five, 2013 S dash zero one five dash zero zero one, page six. Birchwood re-subdivision of Lot twenty-eight. A request for final plat approval to create two lots on property located at ten seventeen Birchwood Avenue zoned R six. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number seven, 2013 B dash zero one two dash zero zero one, on page six. Autumn Oaks Phase ten A. A request to post a new performance bond for property located at Autumn Crossing Way unnumbered and Oakfield Grove zoned R twenty to permit the developer to move forward with recording the final plat to create twenty-one lots associated with this performance bond. Staff recommendation is to approve. And finally, under other business on page six, item number eight, employee contract renewal for Felix Castradot.
Commissioners, items one, three A, three B, five, seven, and eight have been requested via on consent, is a motion to accept.
So moved.
A second. Motion second to approve these on consent, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those have now been passed. For the audience, the two items that will be heard at that public hearing is item number four, which is the Gallatin Road UDO, and item number six, which is two lot to three lot subdivision on Natchez Trace. All other business has been taken care of.
Okay, members of the Commission, this is item four A on your agenda. This is the Gallatin Pike rezoning application. This is an effort to establish the alternative zoning districts along the Main Street Gallatin Pike corridor, a corridor that stretches from South Fifth Street on its southern terminus all the way north to Briale Parkway. The properties included in this zone change application are those that have frontage on this corridor and were included in the Gallatin Pike SP. Properties not included in this application are those that are included in the Auto Diesel Institutional Overlay District. Those are properties not involved in this application are those that are included in PUDs as well along this corridor that were not part of the SP. The only other properties that have frontage on this corridor and are not included in this application are Metro Parcels. Those parcels contain civic uses and aren't intended for redevelopment anytime soon. Accompanying this application is the application to establish an urban design overlay, a UDO, over the entire corridor, the same corridor. That is agenda item four B and will be presented by Greg Johnson immediately following this presentation. Staff's recommendation for this application, this zone change, is to approve with a housekeeping amendment to the community plan that we'll discuss shortly. Before we discuss the three proposed zoning districts, a little background may be helpful. This entire corridor is included in the East Nashville Community Plan area, the community plan that was adopted in 2006. That community plan called for strengthening the Gallatin Pike corridor by improving the appearance and the function of the corridor. The community plan encouraged commercial redevelopment. It also encouraged improvements in the walkability of this corridor. Improvements of walkability include sidewalk improvements, extensions of sidewalks where they don't exist, management of curb cuts along this corridor. Community plan also calls for appropriate building placement and orientation along the corridor, as well as targeted landscape improvements. In an effort to implement the adopted community plan, the Gallatin Pike SP was established by Metro in 2007. The Gallatin Pike SP spoke specifically to building placement and orientation. It included design standards. It also included several use restrictions for properties along this corridor. Again, it was intended to implement the community plan. Fast forward six years, and as a result of a lawsuit filed, there was a court ruling recently that invalidated the entire SP. So the zoning districts, the various zoning districts that were in place in 2007 are still in place and remain in place today. This particular zone change to establish the mixed-use districts attempts to re-implement the outcomes that were expressed in that community plan. The alternative districts proposed are three. They're mixed-use general alternative, they're mixed-use limited, MUL, alternative, and then office residential alternative. And we'll discuss where they're proposed to be applied along the corridor shortly. The alternative districts proposed enable varying degrees of development intensity, development intensity that's commensurate with the corresponding land use policies found along the corridor. The alternative districts enable a mixture of uses. The mixed-use general and mixed-use limited zoning districts allow a range of residential to commercial uses that are fairly similar to those that are permitted in the CS and CL district. The one notable difference is automobile-related uses, automobile sales, repair. Those are not permitted in the mixed-use zoning districts. The office residential, the proposed office residential district is fairly similar to the office residential and office limited zoning where it's in place along, in the northern part of the corridor. And the office residential alternative allows similar uses to those districts. The most notable difference there is it allows residential uses where the office limited district does not. The alternative districts are designed specifically to create walkable neighborhoods, or in this case, create walkable, establish walkable edges to neighborhoods along this corridor. Through the use of appropriate building placement and parking placement, buildings are required to meet a build-to zone, whereas today, in the current zoning districts, they're required to meet a building setback. Parking placement with the alternative districts is required to be located on the side of buildings or in the rear of buildings. The alternative districts also provide appropriate bulk standards. When the alternative districts were initially proposed, we determined that it was appropriate to have, or necessary to have, several community meetings. The first and largest of those community meetings was held on July 22. We sent more than twenty-seven hundred notices out advertising that community meeting to property owners on the corridor and around the corridor, as well as had information available on our website advertising the community meeting. More than sixty participants were there, and a lot of good discussions were had about this proposal to establish the alternative districts on the corridor. As a result of the community meetings, there have been a few changes proposed or made in this proposal. Those changes are found in the northern section of the corridor. One of those, the most notable, is what's precipitating that housekeeping amendment to the community plan. Okay, so let me go back. In order to organize this presentation, we broke the corridor into three sections, just so it's a little bit easier to kind of get a grasp for the area involved. The first area is the southern section of the corridor. It extends from South Fifth Street north to Douglas Avenue. The proposed zoning in this entire portion of the corridor is mixed-use general alternative, MUGA. The existing zoning found along this portion of the corridor includes MUG, CS, CL, office residential, and some fragments of residential zoning district. The grand majority of this portion of the corridor is zoned CS. The proposed MUGA districts would allow, as I said earlier, a mixture of uses ranging from residential to commercial. The MUGA district requires a build-to line as opposed to a building setback. New buildings have to meet that build-to zone of five to fifteen feet off of the line that's established as a result of the major collector street plan. New buildings are permitted a height of five stories at the build-to, in the build-to zone, then they have to step back fifteen feet and are permitted a maximum height of seven stories. The floor area ratio permitted in the MUGA district is three. The land use policy for this portion of the corridor is community center along the main street portion of this corridor and mixed-use and community center for the portion that extends north of East High School. Both of those land use policies support the proposed mixed-use general alternative zoning district. The middle area, or the second area of this corridor, is that portion of the corridor between Chester Avenue extending north to the Inglewood rail overpass. Chester Avenue is just north of the Auto Diesel College, north of Douglas Avenue. This entire portion of the corridor is proposed for mixed-use general alternative zoning as well. The bulk of the property in this section of the corridor is currently zoned CS. There's some office residential zoning, and again, some fragments of residential zoning found. The policy in this area is mixed-use and community center along the entire portion. The mixed-use and community center policy supports the mixed-use general alternative zoning district. The third portion of this corridor has two proposed zoning districts. The first of the two is mixed-use limited alternative, and it's proposed on that portion of the corridor outlined in yellow, yellowy-orange on the screen in front of you. The portions of the corridor proposed for MULA zoning currently have CS, CL, office residential, office limited, and SP, and some residential zoning. A fair portion, or the majority of this portion of the corridor, contains commercial zoning. The MULA district, again, requires the build-to zone as opposed to the building setback. It also requires building orientation to the corridor. Building heights for new buildings in the MULA district, maximum building height in that build-to zone is three stories, and there's a fifteen-foot step-back requirement with a maximum building height of four stories in the MULA district. The floor area ratio, the maximum floor area ratio permitted in the MULA district is one. The other portion of this corridor, outlined in pink on this map, is proposed for office residential alternative zoning. The existing zoning in this portion of the corridor is office residential and office limited. There are some residential zoning districts in this portion of the corridor as well. The office residential alternative is a moderated, allows for a moderated mix of uses ranging from residential to office uses. Commercial uses are not permitted in the office residential zoning district. The policy for this portion of the corridor includes mixed-use and community center, which supports the MULA districts where they're proposed, except for where we're proposing a housekeeping amendment, and we'll discuss. They also include the office and community center, as highlighted in pink on the map. And then there's a portion of commercial mix concentration at the northern end of this portion of the corridor where it intersects with Briale Parkway. We, our, the staff's recommendation is to support, to approve, the proposed mixed-use alternative districts and the office residential zoning district with a housekeeping amendment to the community plan. As a result of a lot of the discussion we had with the community, as well as a reflection of existing uses and existing zoning in this portion of that northern corridor, we, our staff is recommending a mixed-use limited alternative zoning district. The policy for this area is office. However, during our community meetings, we got a lot of feedback from the community expressing a desire to promote, encourage retail uses, restaurant uses in this portion of the corridor. And if, we also look at this portion of the corridor, again, a majority of it's zoned commercial already, and there are many commercial uses existing in this portion of the corridor. So the mixed-use limited, the proposed mixed-use MULA zoning on this portion of the corridor is consistent with community input and consistent with what's there today. So staff is recommending the approval of the alternative districts with a housekeeping amendment to adjust the community plan so that this portion has a mixed, well, reflects the proposed MULA zoning. In conclusion, staff is recommending approval of the alternative, the proposed alternative districts. These proposed alternative districts help us achieve several critical planning goals. They create walkable neighborhoods, they support a variety of transportation choices, as well as provide a range of housing choices along the corridor, supports infill development and promotes compact building design. These proposed alternative districts are also consistent with the East Nashville Community Plan, subject to the housekeeping amendment as well. With that, I will turn the presentation over to Greg Johnson, and he'll go into detail on the proposed urban design overlay.
Commissioners, this is the urban design application related to the zone change. It's a request for an urban design overlay for signage requirements to apply to the Gallatin Pike corridor, the same properties that would be, that the zone change would apply to. Staff recommends approval. The intent of the urban site overlay is to help implement the recommendations, the sign-related recommendations of the East Nashville Community Plan update from 2006. There were two parts of that plan that talked about signage. One was under development goals, and that was with the intent to make improvements to East Nashville's corridors, to coordinate signage, to make it more appropriately scaled for pedestrian environment. It also discussed signs under the design principles where it was, where a concern was also expressed, that the appearance of signs and their disproportionate size was a sort of dissatisfaction in the community for, related to the corridors. Here's a slide showing a comparison of the types of signs that are allowed under the CS zoning versus the proposed Gallatin Pike urban design overlay. You can see on the left, and this just compares two existing family dollar businesses along Gallatin Pike. The one on the left you can see allows, under CS zoning, it allows for tall ground signs. It allows up to forty-foot tall ground signs and also relatively large building signs. Under the UDO, ground signs are required to be reduced in size to a maximum of six feet in height, and are monument, have to be monument style. Hanging signs, another version of a ground sign, a small ground sign, those are also, would also be permitted. And the UDO would also reduce the size somewhat of building signs as well for businesses. Here's a table showing a, the comparison of ground sign standards between the CL and CS zoning districts, the OR twenty and the Gallatin Pike UDO. And you can see there's kind of a step down as you go from left to right in terms of ground sign height, permitted ground sign height and permitted display area of individual signs, from forty feet in CL and CS to a six-foot maximum in the UDO, and a similar step down in the permitted display area. Here's a comparison of building sign standards. None of the zoning districts has a maximum number of signs, but you can see under the display area, CS and CL would permit a fifteen percent maximum signage area for each facade, all sides of a building. And OR twenty would allow for also fifteen percent of the facade area to be used for signage on each side of the building, up to a maximum of one hundred and ninety-two square feet. And for the Gallatin Pike UDO, the area is calculated only using the front or the street-facing facade, and that's also fifteen percent up to a maximum of one hundred and twenty-eight square feet. There are other aspects of the Gallatin Pike UDO that are different from base zoning districts or from the previous Gallatin Pike SP. From the, there's, hanging signs are permitted, and these are also relatively small ground signs that are permitted along street frontages where there's, might be, where there might be minimal space available for a ground sign. And from the community meeting that was held to discuss the zone changes and the UDO, there was also some interest in allowing for ground signs along alleys where businesses might not be easily identifiable from the backside. So an alley sign is basically just another version of a hanging sign that would be allowed along an alley at the rear of a business. Also, the ground signs are permitted for all lots within the Gallatin Pike SP, within the Gallatin Pike UDO, as long as there is room available for a ground sign. The SP, the Gallatin Pike SP, only allowed for ground signs on some lots that had existing buildings with deep setbacks. Internal illumination is permitted for all signs in the UDO as long as it's only illuminating letters and logos. The previous, the SP only allowed for external or spotlight illumination for ground signs. And also, billboards are not permitted in the Gallatin Pike UDO, again, to meet this intent of creating a walkable street frontage along Gallatin. And the same thing with digital and LED signs. Compliance for the UDO is required for alterations for signs that would exceed fifty percent of the cost of the sign, that would require the removal of an existing sign and its replacement with a sign that meets the requirements of the UDO. To conclude, staff recommends approval of the UDO. It's consistent with the development goals and the design principles of the East Nashville Community Plan. It's consistent with the intent to create walkable neighborhoods, and standards similar to the UDO have been adopted in other UDOs and SPs throughout the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Items four A and four B are open for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor would come to the microphone first, and the Commission will vote on these two items separately. Yeah, the council members first, please. Yeah, excuse me. Any council members like to speak?
I just want to thank the Commission and our business owners, and the Planning Commission, and the planning staff, and my fellow council members coming out in this crazy weather, and also during a Titans game, go Titans. And I just want to thank everybody, especially the Commissioners, for their service, for their free service to this community of ours. As a council member for District Five, this UDO directly affects me and my constituents and my business owners and my property owners in my district. I am not against the principles of the UDO. However, though, I am against forcing my business owners and my property owners to comply with it without their input and without getting a majority of the business owners and property owners asking for it and agreeing to this. I've asked at several meetings, can we slow down? What's the rush? Can we look at the market trends? Can we talk to our business owners and listen to them? Right now, there is a distrust amongst the property owners of the council right now in these UDO districts because of, in the past, of a scrambling zoning down their throats, literally. And, you know, this is not me speaking, you know? However, as a former property owner on Gallatin Road, I understand, because at one time, our property was potentially subject to a, to activate an SP. At six twenty-five Main Street, we wanted to put in a new heating air system, and it was going to cost us ten thousand dollars. So we said, no problem, the building is seventy years old, and we could probably use one. However, though, initially, we were going to activate the SP, which would have made us build to the street and caused us a significant financial burden for a small business trying to make payroll. And I understood that. And part of the reason, it was amended, and it was fixed, thank you, planning, thank you, council, from seven or eight years ago. However, though, looking at it further down, I cannot ask the business owners to just take this and not have their input. Only reason why I wanted to defer this thing the other night was because, so that planning can rule. Majority of the time, when planning initiates a zoning bill, Planning Commission hears it first, and I respect the process. And more importantly, right now, we have seven hundred parcels at stake on the Main Street Gallatin Road corridor. And to ask that, you know, business owners don't state their opinion and don't comply, just let us do what we want to do without their say-so, is wrong. I would never rezone property in my district, in my neighborhoods, or any property owner's property without their permission, you know, without their blessing. And it's, and it's hard for me to do this now. More importantly, the Court of Appeals throughout the Gallatin Road SP was a use. More importantly, we are rezoning property and telling people what to do without their input. Let's slow this down, let's talk to our businesses, let's get the majority of these business owners on board with what we're doing here. Let's just take the time and do our jobs. And I just want to thank the Planning Commission and the Commissioners for their hard work in designing this. It's, it looks nice, and they did a lot of hard work, and I commend you. However, though, you have to listen to your people. You have to listen to these business owners and these property owners when they talk to you. All I'm asking here today is just listen to these business owners and these property owners before we proceed. And I just want to thank you for your time, and I yield to you the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Other council members that'd like to speak?
How are you guys today?
Hi.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for having me. Thanks to my colleagues on the council. I wanted to thank planning staff as well for all the hard work going into this so far. First, this is our chance to get our vision and the zoning environment on Gallatin Road a little closer to the reality that we all envisioned. I very much feel this as a, is a great opportunity. I do feel the SP had some significant shortcomings. I feel most of us involved here are approaching this very pragmatically, and more than anything, we're looking for balance. I actually speak to you today as council member for the 7th District, as well as small business owner of iDesign, which is housed at 2621 Gallatin Pike, hopefully offering you some unique perspective. So first, I just wanted to talk about where have we been with the SP and just give a little background of what's happening on the corridor. As you know, the SP was an overlay put in place to help us spur the change that East Nashville wanted to see on Gallatin Road. We all understand the market primarily dictates growth and development, both residentially and commercially. It's all about rooftops and incomes, right? East Nashville, however, was used to taking the bull by the horns, and I feel that pushed the designers of the overlay down the path of SP as opposed to a traditional UDO, which would have simply put some design guidelines in place. The primary shortcoming, I feel, is the SP did go too far, which I've stated publicly in the past, with attempting to control use to the extent that it did. In fact, in its early adoption, the SP went way too far, asking for tear downs and building to the street with low thresholds of renovations for existing buildings. This was clearly misguided, and being a part of these discussions with the Chamber East, we quickly had the council members at the time amend this and continue amending at later times to get the policy moving in the right direction. With regards to controlling use, as predicted, this going too far got the overlay in trouble with the courts, and here we are today. The design-informed standards did not in any way cause the SP being thrown out. I think that needs to be made clear to everyone. We will be arguing here over the best course of action to move forward with, but current information in the community is sort of mischaracterizing this. The SP was not thrown out based on design standards. We now know it just isn't appropriate to SP an entire corridor, and it isn't a good idea to control use to such an extent. As to the Gallatin SP slowing development down, this is definitely not the case, though some would like to believe that. Was it a good thing to have when the economy was down? Maybe not. Since the economy has roared back, though, real estate in particular has flourished, and East Nashville is red hot. Currently, both Main Street and Gallatin are thriving. Here's my quick list of really high-quality investments and developments that we can boast over the last few years and at present. Early on, professional service firm Anode retrofitted an oil and gas building into a hip office workspace. This was a great early example of development, albeit small. Other early adopters were Calypso Cafe, Popeye's Chicken built a great building, and other small ventures. As banks have begun lending again, and East Nashville is hot, mind you, we see more action. Main Street is exploding, led by the redevelopment of several major parcels. Some of these will sound familiar if you've been over to East Nashville. Paro South Creative Suites and Center 615 are modern, large, shared office workspaces, similar to eSpaces across the river. Also on Main, the old Fluffo mattress complex, which is several buildings, is currently being outfitted as a highly unique multipurpose space. The first tenant was Fat Bottom Brewery, followed quickly by Edley's Barbecue, who chose East Nashville for their second location, Hot Yoga of East Nashville, The Filling Station, which is a craft beer growler filling operation, and finally, the warehouse behind these other spaces will be more professional office space for East Nashville. 800 Main Street, the former Bank of America building, is developing as not only a needed storage facility, but also small businesses are signing leases, such as Yeast Bakery and East Nashville School of Dance. A 72-unit upscale apartment buildout is planned for Main Street as well. Further up Gallatin Road at the Cahal intersection, Speedway Gas is investing $3 million for a new station. Having worked with both planning and Speedway on this project personally, I experienced a very productive and quick process that will bring us a beautiful brick and well-planned Speedway Gas Station. The neighbors are thrilled with this. Super Speed Car Wash is also investing near Gallatin and Trinity Lane, transforming an old rundown car wash. Also near Gallatin and Trinity, the owners of Village Pub in Inglewood will be opening their second craft beer bar, Pop Stop, which will operate as a bar but also as a growler filling station. And the Save-A-Lot Strip Center near Gallatin and Fairwin was recently purchased for 1.2 million for future development plans. This list, not even being fully inclusive of all our economic activity, you can see we have a lot of commercial activity on the corridor. I'll let others later speak to how Gallatin Road is far and away the most invested in corridor per mile over the last several years, when compared to its sister corridors such as Nolansville and Murphysboro. So again, the SP being thrown out by the courts, only because of the way SP was being used, creates an opportunity simply to get the desired zoning in place, to set ourselves up to achieve the corridor long term we know Gallatin Road can be. The new MUG and MUL zoning tools allow for what appears to be very developer-friendly use of property with the high FAR and some great commercial development opportunities that neighbors crave. I'm especially excited to open up the North Inglewood portion of the zoning to MUL, as it has been somewhat hamstrung on use options by having office residential as the underlying land use policy. This is a large section of the corridor, and we are opening it up to allow for more uses and economic activity, as in this is a very pro-development move. I think the primary pain point from developers will of course be signage standards within the UDO, as well as the build-to requirement that is attached to these new zoning regulations. As I've mentioned, I am open to compromise on signage. I feel it is time to lose the old pole sign mentality and go with the fixed-to-the-property signs and monument signs, but I am more than open to discussing the appropriate size. And I feel generally the Gallatin SP had it mostly right on signage, but I'm open to conversation. With the build-to-the-street standard that comes with MUG and MUL zoning, I will admit, I'm not as passionate maybe as a city planner is about this, but I feel long-term it sets us up for a more pedestrian-friendly corridor, and it is a great design standard. The small business is typically going to retrofit an existing building, so this typically doesn't affect them. The build-to requirement is primarily going to be in effect, in effect for a larger development that is reworking very large parcels. Another potential, possible compromise point is maybe if a small business owner, a business owner has a small lot size, excuse me, we don't, maybe we don't necessarily require build-to for really small parcels. Could be a great amendment for small business. I'd like to challenge some dissenters to bring points like this and maybe just, you know, not use the argument, the SP didn't work. I think I listed a litany of investments that came with or without having the SP, and we did have it. The market forces will drive the business. Let's work together on how we want to grow. Having standards is not squashing development. Let's figure out what is going to work. As far as what happens today with the planning commission, we'd like to continue moving this forward as we work out the details of what we want in place with the council members, planning staff, business owners, developers, and most importantly, the constituents we represent at the table. I reiterate, as I have stated multiple times, I'm more than open to compromise on the final zoning measure or sign UDO we put in place here for Gallatin Road. I'm very much open to amendments and working on this measure until we have the greatest amount of buy-in from all parties. My record shows I support business and economic development at every turn, and my mantra has been to bring more to Gallatin Road. I think we've had some really great success, and we want more. So today, we would like some sort of ruling from the commission to help us continue to move forward in our process as we work with neighbors, developers, small business owners, and with the ever-important guidance from the metro planning staff. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other council member like to speak?
Good afternoon. My name is Peter Westerholm. I serve on the Metro Council representing District 6 in East Nashville. A significant portion of the Gallatin Road, what was formerly known as the Gallatin Road SP. I believe you've heard a number of good comments that I tend to agree with, in many cases, wholeheartedly, both from, both within the staff recommendation and from my fellow colleague, Anthony Davis. I don't want to go over those points too much, but I did want to highlight a few things and just reiterate what I feel is very important for the commission to consider. The East Nashville Community Plan that came through in 2006, this update was a very comprehensive community plan update, much as they all are. This involved numerous meetings over a long period of time with community members, and they used that process to set forth a vision. And what that vision centered around were principles that are present, that were present with both the Gallatin Road SP and especially present within the matter before you today, both within the zoning change and within the UDO. In my mind, that vision has been, not only was it valid back in 2006, but it's been reinforced by what we've seen happen in other areas, not just around Nashville, but around the country. Every place you see, I think the most Italian example that I've seen recently was in Los Angeles, when they implemented a new complete street policy that was centered around the pedestrian. When you think about Los Angeles, it's not what you traditionally think of as a pedestrian-oriented environment, but every city from Chicago to New York to Los Angeles, all throughout the country, is, has identified and recognized the importance of building with the primary thought behind the pedestrian experience. Because we recognize that at some point throughout each day, we all are pedestrian, whether we drive somewhere, take the bus somewhere, or ride the bike, having that component of the pedestrian scale has made a difference, has made a difference in areas where this complete street intentional design has gone forward, where we've seen more development, more investment, an increase in public safety, and an overall, a creation of place. And I believe it's that creation of place that really drove home what was set out in that original vision. People looked at Gallatin Road and thought, what could this be? What do we want this, this main thoroughfare, this heart of our community to look like? What do we want it to feel like? And I believe that the things, the elements that were described at that point in time, the elements that are still described to me on a daily basis as I talk to neighbors throughout the community of East Nashville, those elements are present in this plan. And I would just urge you to, as we move forward, I would urge you to support this particular, both of these particular pieces of legislation. At one point, I did want to highlight before I close, was a statement from the analysis. And this is in the last paragraph. "The proposed districts will allow more intense development than the current zoning districts." More intense development, to me, is important because we recognize, as all of us have been paying attention to the Nashville Next process and understand the growth that's going to come to Nashville. We understand that as a community, we're going to be growing. We understand, particularly in East Nashville, that much of that increased population will likely fall in that area and along corridors like Gallatin. And identifying a way for more of that development, more of that investment, and more of that density to take place in an appropriate manner is sustainable both environmentally and economically. I also wanted to point out a comment from that same paragraph. "Additions to non-conforming structures would be permitted, as long as the additions do not increase the degree of non-conformity. Buildings damaged to more than 50% of their total floor area would be required to comply with the new zoning standards." In my mind, that's a very fair way to move forward. It allows for current property owners to continue their business, and if they do want to improve their business, they're able to do so if they follow a certain path forward. So in my mind, this offers a very fair treatment of the existing businesses while laying out and adhering to the vision that the community supported back in 2006, and I believe very wholeheartedly still supports today. I urge you to adopt both of these measures, and I appreciate your time. I also appreciate all the work that the staff of the planning department has done as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members that'd like to speak? Last chance. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this, please come to the microphone, give us your name, you'll be allowed two minutes.
I am Dorothea Sherwood, a member of the Concerned Citizens of South Inglewood, but I am speaking on behalf of myself. My, one of my primary concerns relates specifically to the shortened concept of the setback. And I wonder if the highway needs to be increased for MTA or bus rapid transit or for any other purpose. What effect will this have? What effect would the closer setback have on such an overall widening as the mayor might wish? I also want to know if the closer proximity of buildings to the highway over a long term would perhaps create a situation where traffic would cause vibrations to damage such buildings? And thirdly, I want to know whether the closer setback will affect the accessibility of handicapped people to the entrances of buildings. I think perhaps the accessibility buses can go to the side or around the back, but I am not certain that this would be implemented. Thank you.
Just to quickly answer the question, the Gallatin Road has been designed for its ultimate expansion capacity, including sidewalks and the greenway between the sidewalk and the buildings, and so all that's accommodated in the proposed rezon.
The microphone is open to anyone wishing to speak in favor. We'll take people in favor first.
Good afternoon. Hope we can get back over to East Nashville. My name is Tom Harden. I'm a resident of Historic Edgefield, have been there since 1995. I was very actively involved in the plan of Nashville and working on the East Bank Development. I support this UDO and zoning ideas. I think it will help with development. I think it creates a situation where we can move forward, and it will stay in line with what the community has asked for in the past and has associated itself with in the past. I want to thank you all for having put together this proposal. I know it took a lot of work to do it. I was at some of the meetings that you all put on to gather input and feedback, and they were very well done. A lot of people had a lot of time to give you an idea of, or give their ideas, how this thing should go. I agree that the East Nashville and the Gallatin Road is about to pop, and there's a lot of development coming our way. I think the point we want to have about development is for it to be community-oriented and neighborhood-supported. And what you've had in that area in the last few years is a lot of neighborhood support, a lot of energy behind making that area a livable, walkable place. Gallatin Road right now is not very walkable, it's not very livable, although you've heard eloquent comments about how it is beginning to get better. This plan, if you all approve it and send it on the council, I believe will push us forward and help us a great deal in getting where we want to go, and I thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? If you're wishing to speak in favor, if you line up just behind this gentleman the microphone and save some time for the commissioners.
Good evening. My name is Ron Smith. I own actually two pieces of property along Gallatin Pike and Gallatin Avenue, one of which is a commercial site and the other, which is currently a residential site. I am generally in favor of the UDO, as it actually improves my zoning on both those sites. I would like to see probably some exception made for owners of small properties. Some of these lots along Gallatin Pike especially are only 50 feet wide. To require someone that has a building on a, or wants to build a building on a 50-foot wide lot, to build up on the front of the property, up at the street, and put all his parking in the back or along the side, even if he puts all his parking in the back, he's going to be required to have a 24 or 25-foot wide drive to get there, as most of these lots do not have an alley behind them, as was kind of envisioned with the SP. But this would only leave him, at best, if he built to the property line and to, and to his drive, 25 feet of width to build his building in, which would, I think, would considerably limit him as to, you know, what he can do with that, with that property. As I, I would, I would like to see the, the commission and the commissioners consider -- As I, I would like to see the commission and the commissioners consider some exception for small lots in these requirements. Other than that, I'm for the UDO. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If there's seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Hey, everyone. My name's Lance Bloom, and I'm a broker at CB Ragland Company. I recently got the listing for a property on the corner of Arti and Gallatin Pike. It's a former U.S. bank branch. It's vacant. It was vacant long before I got the listing for it. But the bank branch is not unique in the respect that it's vacant. If you go along the northern part of Gallatin Pike, there are many, many bank branches and other buildings that were formerly of retail use that are currently vacant and have remained vacant for quite some time. Part of the reason is because of the OR 20 zoning in place at these sites. It restricts the sites to office use only. To be able to do retail on a property not only increases the value, increases the amount of tenants that could be in place there. Currently, at best, the property is valued at $200,000 for an office use. If it was able to be a retail use, which it currently is now that the zoning's been brought back, it's about $300,000 plus. By having this OR 20 zoning in place for buildings such as these bank branches severely limits the potential value for a building for not only a person, but a company or anyone that owns property along that section of Gallatin Pike. To strip away $100,000 in value for a property simply because people believe that an office use is best for the street, just, I don't believe it's fair for someone, you know, to incur that kind of financial hardship just because someone wants office use there. I mean, in this kind of financial environment, office uses, not a lot of people can get bank loans for to buy an office building. Most people rent. So you're severely limiting the ability for someone to gain the maximum amount of value for their property. And not only that, you know, this bank branch's got a drive-through, a lot of these do. It'd be great for a coffee shop, great for a restaurant, and would only improve the community. To severely limit that by only allowing a real estate office or something like that in there, not only hurts the community, but it hurts the property owner. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? If you're going to speak, if you line up.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you so much. My name's Clint Camp. I live at 1212 Sunnymead in the Inglewood area. I'm a lifelong resident of Inglewood in the northern section of this corridor. I also represent a family that has operated a East Nashville construction house-moving business in the East Nashville area for over 100 years. I'd like to say that generally, I'm in favor of the intent of this process. I'm a strong proponent of the urban streetscape, believe in the front-loaded and pedestrian and multimodal focus that it represents. However, I do take exception to the speed with which this entire process is occurring. I feel that it's valuable to have those community conversations and expand upon those that were created during the base community plan 2006. I think it would be valuable to go back and recreate and have some of those charrettes and update that information through whatever moratorium or however brief that may be, so we can analyze and develop additional nodes of development along this corridor versus just merely looking at the corridor itself. I think there's a lot of value and success that can occur by creating a road diet, enacting the Complete Streets Initiative and this multimodal implementation, and what I believe will be the expansion of the BART whatsoever time in the future that may be. However, the coordination that's imperative with this process is very important, whether it be with the NES, the Public Works and Metro Water Services for capital projects, as well as the mayor's office. This will not be successful unless we can allocate some additional funding through those to help spur the development and create that implementation. If you would, please, take that into consideration as you move forward, and hopefully we can have those community conversations to improve this plan. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition? Seeing none, is a motion to close the public hearing. Motion to second close of public hearing, all in favor, aye. Any opposed? Hearing is closed.
I don't know if this is for Greg or for you. How does the NES utility easements along Gallatin Road impact the Build 2 line?
Bob may be able to answer that. My experience is that NES is willing to work with redevelopment. They have with several of the larger projects throughout Davidson County where they typically require 20-foot easement along the frontage of a property. They've been willing to adjust those easements with notes in the plans that make sure that there's still clearance between overhead transmission lines and building edges. So my experience is that they've worked with redevelopment of sites.
And then, Rick, I guess for you, or I guess since Doug's not here, we've heard from a couple of different council people about the speed of this process. Is there a reason that it's going so quickly? Given, is it because the SP was overruled?
Well, the process of the SP, the original SP was what was overruled, and we met with the affected council members, and they requested to proceed in a reasonable fashion. We proceeded and had several meetings and are here.
Yeah, and I'm usually one not to contradict staff and to support staff, but it seems to me that for a stretch of road this long, a one-size-fits-all process may not work. So I'm...
Well, this is, I just, this is a very, it's a very nuanced process. It's not a one-size-fits-all.
I understand that.
There's a number of zonings, and we're not aware of any circumstance where the development intensity has been lowered, I don't think, on any piece of property at all. In most properties, it has been increased by sixfold, so...
As far as the intensity?
Right, right. Permitted intensity, right.
I'd like to hear from my fellow members. Greg?
Well, you know, for rezoning a whole corridor, I used to represent the Nolansville corridor, part of it. And, you know, it's a different, different area of Nashville. And, you know, personally, the SP, I'd always thought that it was a little bit limiting somewhat. But I guess I have some questions before I start getting into some statements. There's been some, some statements of the, like you said, Rick, and the other councilmen's of expansion. Is that expansion from the old SP, or is that the expansion of the current zoning being commercial, like CS? Or what is this, the expansion piece? Is it an expansion of intensity, or is it an expansion of the type of use for the property?
It's expansion of development intensity, and it's expansion of development intensity from what is now the zoning on the property.
So give me an example, maybe, that might help.
I mean, an example is, say you have a 50-by, well, say you have a lot that's 100 by 100, okay? 10,000 square feet. Under the current zoning, the CS zoning on the majority of this corridor, you can put a building of 6,000 square feet on that. Under the proposed zoning of MUGA, you could put a building of 30,000, 30,000 square feet on that.
So, so I guess...
The uses are generally the same. There's a couple of them that are there, but the uses are...
So you can, so if it starts as an office building, you can make a bigger office building?
Or in most cases, you can do an office, or you can do office and commercial, or you can do office, commercial, and residential, or you can do any or all parts of those.
So are you talking about, well, in reading some of the emails, and I'm not sure why more people either did not speak in for or against, but it seems like some, some of the emails and some of the concerns have not been addressed, and that's why I think I have these questions. So, and then there was also some questions about small lots and that sort of thing. And I want to go back, I guess, to the utility thing first. So is there a representative from NES here? Or is there?
No.
So what you're saying to me is if, for instance, I bought a particular lot and it was way, you know, it was in the back of the lot, and I had to move, I wanted to build a new building on the lot, I had to move it up to the 15-feet rule, does the current utilities, the gas, the NES, the water, I mean, does that allow for that building to be that close to the street without? I mean, I'm getting...
This is not the first time we've used these standards in the city. I mean, there, there are a number of places in the city, and typically, you work those out as if you do on most cases, on a case-by-case basis, and you work, work around that. I mean, I think NES has been open generally to that. I mean, we had a lot of issues in the Gulch, where you've had development there, and they've been able to work it out as long as you've got the clearance. They haven't, what they've begun doing is not do a blanket universal ground-to-sky easement. They're doing a distance from the actual building, in terms of a separation distance to the building, which allows you the design flexibility in most cases that you need.
Well, let me ask you this. Why is the standard 15 feet?
It's 5 to 15.
Five to 15?
Right. It's to give flexibility.
Is that the best, or is it like 5 to 20? I mean, I'm trying to learn what's best, or is it...
Well, when the districts were developed, there was a lot of research in terms of looking at sidewalk cafes, the width of sidewalks and all of that, and proximity to bus stops, proximity to parking and those kinds of things. And it was felt like that most communities, a 5 to 15 ratios, I mean, in our case, it was literally, I think, in most cases, it's 0 to 15. We, we felt like that there was a need for flexibility in terms of the 5, and put the 5 to 15 in there.
So with, with this rezoning, do you feel like there's not, in your professional opinion, do you feel like it does not limit any future development? Is that what you're saying?
I don't think so. I don't think that our experience in this corridor under the old SP, as well as in other parts of the city, I mean, this community is faced with the issue of growth, as you well know. I mean, we're going to have over 200,000 people. We're faced with the desire in general to try and preserve neighborhoods. We're faced with the fact that we have limited transportation options. All of those lead to the fact that intensifying the corridor development is going to be critical for the long-term economic viability and vitality of this community. In order to increase that, you've got to create a zoning that will allow the increase, which this does, and facilitate the efficient operation of an alternative transit system and protect the neighborhood. So, I mean, I think the big picture issues that this is, is seeing is moving us in the direction of being able to accommodate what you're, what you're hearing in terms of neighborhood protection, as well as in terms of growth and handling the fact that the city's investing significant money on Gallatin Road already in terms of mini-BRT, but also, or BRT-light, also in the potential of intensifying that development. So in order to do that, you've got to make those areas more transit accommodating. I think, though, that as the councilman stated, there might be some circumstances of small lots or something we need to, need to look at, and I think we have the ability to look at that with them and with the council and make some amendments to the UDO as it goes forward.
Okay, that was going to be my next question, is that I was going to ask about the small lots exception, and I appreciate you bringing that up. That seems...
Well, I think there's several things on the small lots. I think there's circumstances where there's an alley in a small lot. I think there's also circumstances, as we had testimony on today, from a mandate for a 24-foot-wide driveway that a UDO could address in terms of lowering those standards and, and doing that. So there's several kinds of options, and there might be options in terms of some flexibility on the setback. I think, I think we need to, to work with a couple of those situations and, and find something that, that could, could solve that problem.
Yeah, and I do apologize for all my questions. This is a big rezoning, and I just want to make sure that I'm clear before I vote on something. The other, there was another question that the young gentleman, that's a real estate broker, brought up about office use only, the OR district. Is that, can that be, was that true, or what was the deal there?
I think, number one, you know, okay, we need to understand where it is, but go ahead, Duane.
Well, I identified that property, and that's in, that's in the portion of the third, that's in the third area of this corridor. It was originally identified for office residential zoning, but that's the area that we changed to MULA.
And so what would that allow?
So it would allow commercial uses, including restaurants, retail.
Okay.
The property I identified is proposed for MULA now.
So it's MULA, okay. Perfect. Good. And I, I did see a thing about permits since 2007. Can you go over some of those statistics, Rick? Because I'm interested in, in just knowing, I guess, in general about...
We've had several meetings, and there've been several statements that development, that SP had stifled development, and there'd been a tremendous slowdown in development here relative to other corridors. And so what we did was do an analysis of the five years that the SP was in effect, basically from 2007, I think, to this past year. And we looked at Dickerson Road, Franklin Road, Gallatin Road, Lebanon Pike, Mefersworth Pike, and Nolansville Pike, and basically went from the same point in either the inner loop and generally out to what would be an appropriate location. In some cases, it was Riley Parkway; in some cases, it was Woodmont. And obviously, there's some, in Franklin, it just went out to roughly Thompson Lane, because behind, beyond that, you've just got residential. And then we did a comparison of the number of permits and the value of those permits, and then broke that down by mile, because each of those corridors is slightly different. And what we found is during that time period, Gallatin Pike had the most permits per mile and had the highest value of permits per mile over those, those other corridors.
Are those, are those, is there a way that you can figure out if that's a remodeling permit or a...
Yeah.
So are those all remodeling permits or new builds?
No, they're both, and I assume they're probably both on all, all those cases, yeah.
Do you have it broken down?
I don't have it broken down here in terms of whether it's remodeling or not. I mean, I think, I think that, I mean, I think you probably got, I mean, you've got new, new and remodeling on all those corridors, so, you know.
Okay. I'm going to listen to what my, my other colleagues have to say.
Please don't apologize for questions, because we all have them. There's some big-picture things, but also some details following kind of that line of thinking, I want to be sure that we're communicating properly. When we say new buildings would be adhering to these rules, what's the trigger for that? Is it, is 50% of value and/or a brand-new building? So if I have a property...
50% of square footage, isn't it?
Is it, so square footage? So if I have a building on my property and I want to double it, then it needs to comply with the Build 2?
Actually, no. If it's, if it's a building addition, if you have an existing building and you want to add on to that building, even if you're doubling the square footage of that building, so long as your addition doesn't increase the degree of nonconformity, which has been interpreted by our codes department with these mixed-use alternative districts, is that they can go behind or in front or on top of the building. So if you're adding on, there, there really isn't a trigger, at which point your additions have to meet the Build 2 zone. If it's a new building, we're talking about 100% start-over, from the ground up, construction.
So we're only, so this only applies to an empty lot or a raised building with a new construction?
Correct. I think that's correct.
That's the way it's been interpreted generally. I mean, it's, the issue of not increasing the nonconformity is pretty broad, so it's been interpreted pretty broadly.
Right. So if you're grandfathered if it's nonconforming, but if you're, tell me an example of if I'm increasing the nonconforming use enough to trigger it. That's the part I don't understand.
I guess I'm not understanding the question. If you're, now, increasing the use is a little bit different from expanding a nonconforming building.
Well, then, explain, expanding the noncon, when you say, you're just talking about the physical, nonconforming building, you can expand it.
Right.
Period.
Right. If you have a building that's setback 50 feet from, from the front property line, you can add on to that building to, generally, to any extent, in front of the building, behind the building, above the building. At no point, as long as it's a building addition, are we going to say, you've got to meet the Build 2 zone.
Even if I'm changing the tenant in the building?
It's applicable to the building, not the use.
Okay.
I might just add that nonconforming structures is talked about in Title 1740, 660, and it talks about enlargements and conversions, nonconforming, a nonconforming structure may be enlarged or converted to another permitted use provided there's no increase in the degree of nonconformity. And that, whether there is a degree and the increase of... And that, whether there is a degree and the increase of nonconformity or an increase in the degree of nonconformity is really a fact question for the BZA when they review whether or not they're going to allow that use to continue and expand. So I don't know how, whether...
So that's not something we interpret, that's a BZA question?
Right, exactly. It's a BZA question.
So are we in coordination with them on what some of these examples would be that would allow people to know...
Yeah, I mean, this is not, this is not new. This is the way that it's done everywhere else in the county.
Okay. So that's, this, in general...
There's nothing unique about this.
So that's an existing way that we do with BZA, and that's how we do it all the time.
This is a standard zoning district.
In this case...
This is a standard zoning district that's applied every day, and it has the same nonconforming standards and triggers as any zoning district anywhere in the county.
Okay. So I just want to be sure, because I feel like we've gotten letters and we've gotten comments of words like "downzoning" and I feel like we're not communicating enough. What I think we're really talking about is new construction, expanding opportunities for types of actually zoning. I mean, if it were office now, it can be office and residential and all these mixed uses, which to me is a degree of expansion as opposed to stripping away of rights, which is what I feel like we're getting feedback from people saying they don't want.
I think you're still getting some feedback is...
Are we communicating what we're doing well enough?
Well, I think we're trying to do that. I think Councilman Davis, Scott Davis, I'll be more specific, kind of went over that pretty well, you know? I mean, the original, people are confused with what the original Gallatin Road SP was and what this is. This is a rezoning to straight zoning districts. The original Gallatin Road SP had its own unique timing and triggers in there that, as you well know, the commission and the council adjusted two or three times. Ultimately, it simply has gone to the standard triggers that are used for every development in the city. It's not anything unique in these districts. And these are straight zoning districts. They're standard zoning districts that we have in other parts of the county and have experienced with as opposed to doing the SP. Now, the UDO is primarily a signed UDO, and it has some flexibility if we want to go in and do some design standards that aren't necessarily in there now, but the language on the bill is broad enough to be able to look at some of those things on the small lots. If that's something that Councilman Anthony Davis stated that was open to doing that, but it has that capacity to...
Okay. While you're on signage, I did have a question about that, about, I think I read about that it's a trigger there is if you replace 50% of the sign. So if you change a tenant, it's just a typical example. If you have a big sign and you've got a facade on the front of it, and you've got, you know, Joe's business, and Joe moves out, and you want to keep the sign in place where it was and put Sally's business on the panel instead, is that changing 50% of the sign?
No, we've had this, no. You can change the panels.
I'm just trying to be clear.
You can change the panels, 100% of the panels.
Okay. So that's not the part, that's not what you mean by the 50% trigger? I just want to be sure that's clear. Okay. Because that's a complaint of reality that has happened in the past.
It has happened in the past.
And then the question of another, the FAR, which I think is, in some cases, is three, some cases is one, have we compared how that matches with parking requirements? You know, if I'm granted an FAR of three, which is great because it encourages me to build a denser building on that site, but are we in the UZO with parking requirements that allow for less parking in order, you know, for, I don't have, where am I going to put my parking if I can fill up the site with all my building, and then I don't meet the parking requirement? Are we coordinating those two things in this stretch?
They are, and all the parking, the UZO parking standards apply to any of these properties that are in the UZO. They get all the benefit of the UZO parking.
And so those two things have been matched up pretty well?
I mean, obviously, as you well know, at some intensity level, you're going to be in structured parking. I mean, it's, you can't get both a three FAR in ground-level parking unless you're, what's the maximum height on the MUG?
Seven stories.
Seven stories. I mean, seven stories would allow you roughly to develop 2/3 of the site in terms of building and 1/3 of the site in parking if you went seven stories up. I think that's roughly it, I guess, at a FAR three. So, yeah, I mean, if you're going to do, if you're going to max out your FAR at that level, then you're probably going to do some sort of structure underground or other kind of parking.
I just think that might be a place, when we're talking about smaller sites, to consider potential allowances that might be particularly case-by-case, because sometimes in smaller parcels, you can't afford to do that sort of parking, and yet we want to encourage on-street parking use or to-be-counted or shared parking or other ways to deal with it so that it doesn't all have to be on the site.
Right. I think staff would be very open to decreasing the parking standards more. That's not a...
Well, I agree. I mean, we all get that. We're all about want-transit, but I just want it to be realistic.
Well, I think there's a market, I mean, basically, the market is what we find drives parking, not the parking standards.
Okay. I just want people to feel comfortable they can come and deal with those issues if there's something they need an exception for that they, you know, so that we can encourage the development as we go. And then back to the question of utilities, I mean, it keeps coming up. We're all concerned about it, but, you know, in this picture that we're looking at, if you wanted to build a residential mixed-use with retail downstairs, and you've got NES lines, and there's the coverage about the closeness of the height, have we, when there's a huge NES line going down the road, we all know that it's, there are substations they have to tie into. You can't just move the NES line, and so what do we do when we want buildings to be there and they're physically not, they're too close to the clearance?
Well, the practical answer is that we try to work with NES to get the interpretation as whatever, as close as you can, and then if it can be, then the building can be moved back to accommodate that. I mean, it's something that's kind of a, and that's the way we've done it for, I don't know, eight or 10 years now, has worked there. NES is given as much as they can, but ultimately, there's still going to have to be a clearance. And in those cases where you have whatever that clearance is, then becomes where you build it.
So that's where we accommodate with exceptions based on the reality of what that is, if NES can't move it. Because that happens a lot.
Right.
I mean, we, I've dealt with it where you, sometimes NES can actually move the line, and you get people together, and you pay for it, but other times you can't.
Right. And the same thing with sewer easements and things like that, too, stormwater and stuff.
You do it for all of them?
Hmm?
You do it for...
Well, that was my next question. I was about to go through Cass and then telecommunications, everybody else. So we are able to deal with the reality of where the utility is that we can or can't do and let the building owner move a few feet back if they need to.
Right. Right, yeah. And we had to do that in the Gulch, we've had to do that in other places, yeah. I mean, ideally, as you well know, we'd like to move the utilities or put them underground. In most cases, you can't do that. The cost is just what it is.
Well, and sometimes you can move it. If there are alleys, you can do it.
But there's still a cost in many cases, yeah.
Right. And somebody's got to pay for it. And then the alleys behind, are there not so many alleys? Somebody had said there weren't very many alleys behind these areas, and I thought there were.
There's a lot of alleys, but there's areas that don't have alleys.
That don't, okay. So I appreciate that you're thinking about making the driveway smaller and those sorts of things to accommodate the smaller sites, because we have to be realistic about what's I think, in general, I think all of the big issues of what we're wishing for, that we're trying to pursue, are in here, and I appreciate the description of walkability is not just a generic word that we all, you know, if you say it too many times, it starts to lose meaning, but when you talk about the pedestrian experience, you talk about people. It's pretty important, and that's what we're all talking about, is if we're retailers or office developers or whoever we are, wanting people to come in, we want the experience to be good. And I think that's the ultimate goal here, and I think a lot of these things will help achieve that. I think allowing for residential is, I mean, that's been my mantra forever, is it should all be mixed-use, because then you can have the opportunity for people to be using the airspace. I mean, let's build more intensely on these corridors. And Rick mentioned that it does help protect neighborhoods. If we have a lot of people who say, I want my single-family neighborhood back here, but we need to have intense people in moving in, intensity of people moving in, we want transit, then I think having residential above retail and offices is going to be paramount, and we have to do it. I think that the involvement, we're worried about the quick process, but I do think there was a huge involvement of the community to make the community plan, and I feel like this is furthering that goal. It's actually implementing a plan. And, you know, we all get so tired of plans being stuck on a shelf, and here we're coming up with a process to implement a plan, and if it has to have tweaks during the council process and some realities with the staff when a developer comes in and we can deal with those realities, that's going to be real life. But I think in general, if we've got new development coming, will people, can we say to development how we want it to happen for large developments? I mean, I think if we're talking about new construction and large developments, then it's setting a standard for where we want to be. So in general, I feel like that's what we're trying to do here, and I do want to keep listening to what stumbling blocks we might be bumping into, but I think in theory, and for some experience that we've had in other areas, it seems really positive. So I really want to hear from everybody else, too.
Judy.
My questions are answered, especially about what we can do with the smaller lots, and so, understanding that they have some options and that we, you know, would take that case-by-case as we look at those standards that we are asking them to apply. The gentleman that was up speaking about the bank and that it was office use only and had the idea that maybe a drive-through coffee shop or eatery would be better suited, were we...
I think that's what, that's what Duane said, that was actually an MUL, which is a mixed-use, which does allow that, right?
So he maybe didn't know that before he came up. Is that what it was, so now he knows that?
And then that was a change, as a result of the public input we'd had before.
That was a change. And then the letter that we got from H.G. Hill, where he's talking about the proposed downzoning and UDO makes any redevelopment on Gallatin Pike very costly and thus risky. Have we been able to, with the changes that were made, satisfied this particular developer that we're not trying to...
We've been really had a discussion with H.G. Hill, but they've seemed to take advantage of the zonings all over the city. So, I mean, if he's got specific things, I think he has some signed, specific things that we need to work through in particular.
Some signed things, okay.
Yeah. He may have others, but I'm sure he has some signed ones.
Okay. And then as it relates to timing of everything, sounds like we have gone through our process the way we would normally do, and the community has had opportunity to have input. Developers would have had input, too, if they wanted to at that time, so we feel comfortable with the timeframe, everything that we've gone through.
I think we feel comfortable with it. In fact, we were part of a meeting that East Nashville Chamber of Commerce hosted that was specifically for the business owners along that corridor.
Okay. So given that this is a large zoning for a large stretch of properties, that we've given a lot of time and attention to it. So, thank you. I'm satisfied.
After the last meeting, somebody gave me a hard time because I didn't say anything in the entire meeting, so I'm going to make up for it.
It wasn't you.
It wasn't you. You know, I think it's important for us to recognize and for the public to understand that, you know, we take this extraordinarily seriously. I mean, this is 700 properties we're talking about, and only two times I can think of in the recent, or recent past that we've rezoned that many properties. One is downtown, which went through about an 18-month process and many stakeholder meetings and focus groups and public meetings. The other one was midtown, which went through a similar process. This one's tough because we went through that process, certainly with community plan, and we went through a, you know, a very involved process with the SP. But that was a number of years ago, and we've had time to test the SP in certain cases. So I am concerned, you know, we've heard people say that they're confused, or heard people say that people are confused and that perhaps the process is rushed, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure why we need to rush through this, and I do believe that the property owners should have a seat at the table, and especially when we've got property owners who have built, as Rick said, have taken advantage of some of the more urban zoning changes that we've made and have built and really understand the importance of building in a more urban fashion, more pedestrian-friendly fashion, and have done that in areas where the market was ready for it. And what I think I'm reading in this letter and others is, you know, that, you know, there's a tipping point often, I think, and we've seen it in certain, throughout downtown and the urban neighborhoods, of when the market's ready to be able to support this type of development. And there's all kinds of factors, of course, that play into that, but, you know, we've seen some corridors, Jefferson Street, there's been some challenges with some of the, some of the new buildings that have been built up to the street in terms of leasing, so it may not have hit the tipping point yet in the market. Gallatin Pike's probably really close, and I would suspect Main Street is already there, you know? And that was another thing I wanted to point out, is that we've got a, is this five miles about? A five-mile stretch.
Right.
And there's lots of things changed along that five miles, and there might be parts of that stretch that the market has tipped. There might be parts of it where it hasn't necessarily. There's parts that are planned for the BRT closer to town, other parts that have not been planned for additional transit. So I'm not su, I think, Jeff, you said, you know, the concern about the one-size-fits-all, and I think specifically with the Build 2 line, makes me wonder, can we bite this off in smaller pieces? Can there be certain types of exceptions for smaller lots? The challenge is there. Maybe there are intersections, key nodes along the corridor that the market would support Build 2, you know, lines more easily. Maybe the densities are higher in certain areas than others. So, you know, and again, I go back to where this type of urban development has been very successful. I mean, 12 South is now a place that I think has hit the tipping point, and we see the investment there by this very developer. So I take that, I take H.G. Hill's and other properties, property owners' comments very seriously on this rezoning. I think we've had time to test it, test the SP in certain locations, and I'm not sure that the entire corridor is ready. But I think going through a process where the property owners are at the table and that there are multiple meetings and discussions and finding common solutions, we may still very well end up with what I think the planning staff and the community plan is recommending, so.
Just a question about that. If an area's not ready, is somebody going to come along and tear down a building and build a new project there anyway? We're talking about new construction. So we're talking about a developer who's analyzed a location and picked a city and picked a spot within a city to develop, and they're going to do a new building, and if they're going to put that kind of investment in, what's not ready about it? And then, so we're telling them, okay, if you, we'd love to have you, we'd love to put you have a new building in, but we just want you to do it closer to the road so that in the future, these things all, we don't have snaggletooth stuff, new projects come closer to the road. And then they're going to be snaggletoothed because existing buildings are grandfathered. And if they're not ready because they, somebody doesn't want to invest there, they'll maybe retool the building and put a new tenant in it and keep it the way it is, but when that energy for that market is ready, they're going to invest enough to tear it down and put a new building there. And so we're saying, if you're going to do a new building, bring it up closer the way we want our road to look. I'm just curious what we're afraid of. I'm not, I'm being the devil's advocate a little. I'm not sure, I'm not maybe interested in delaying it, too. I don't know quite where I'm going to go, but I just want to raise, I just want to be sure we understand what we're talking about.
Right. I guess, and I'm not a developer, so Andre, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, the property value, the cost of the land and the rents, and then, of course, the construction costs all go into the equation to determine whether it's viable. And I guess when I'm talking about the tipping point in the market is when the rents can support new construction, price of land, and so on. But I do think that the rents are impacted by the form and...
And where the parking goes.
And where the parking goes. And I think, you know, and I do think that tipping point is probably different for different uses. I think for a restaurant on Gallatin Pike to be built up to the street, I think, could probably work along most of this corridor. But we have food deserts over in East Nashville, and grocery stores... But we have food deserts over in East Nashville, and grocery stores, you know, especially since the recession, as we all know, have, have, you know, to some degree backed away from their more urban models and are looking for the, you know, more proven suburban models that fit into their business model. So, I mean, I'm, you know, I'm obviously, as you know, want to just recreate the SP along there and hope it all happens. But when we get letters from property owners that have done it in other places where the market has tipped, and, you know, I, I think we should really take that seriously and maybe slow down the process, maybe look at portions of, of the corridor. You know, Riley Parkway, North Inglewood is very different than Main Street. And I think we'll, you know, we've seen, you know, the types of development that were mentioned in terms of the investments that have been made have not been made up, you know, in all parts of it. So I just think maybe we can, can step back and, I don't know where, I guess it's, there's already been a bill filed. I don't know if the council--
Well, they have the ability to amend the bill. I just, just want to speak to something because I think that, and I apologize for this, Mr. Chairman, but we've worked long and hard with H.G. Hill on, on a lot of their projects. And I think that the example of the 12 South, which I think is an outstanding example and outstanding project, was only been able, in my opinion, to be done because the zoning was in place to allow them to do that. They would have never, I don't believe they would have ever been able to have gone through a rezoning process and get that project built. And we saw that on Hillsborough Road, at Hillsborough Village, where they had an even, an equally as good a project as they had on 12 South. And the zoning wasn't in place to be able to do that, and we wound up with an outstanding project but less than what it could have been. And I think that part of this is to, to put in place, especially if you're at the tipping point, the ability for a developer and a property owner to do the right thing as opposed to have to be forced because of timing or whatever to do something that, they don't have time to go through a rezoning process or something like that to get the project going. If it's, if it's, I mean, I've heard people say, well, if you wanted to do that, then you could go through and do a rezoning or an SP. Well, if you've got that unique circumstance that, that, that maybe doesn't fit, I think that one would be the time to do the exception rather than, than the rule. But I do think, though, that there are some small lot situations that we will get with the council members and get with the public and kind of work on. But, and H.G. Hill may differ, and I may disagree with it, but I don't think they've ever gotten 12 South if they'd gone through a rezoning process with the community. I mean, that's just my opinion.
I guess--
And they did that because it was in place. The zoning was in place, they didn't have to do anything other than go pull a building permit.
I guess that's why I'm confused, why they would be opposed to this. So if we haven't met with individual property owners that have these kind of major concerns that have been successful doing it other places, where the zoning was in place, I'd like to ask the staff to get to the bottom of--
I think we will get with them on signage. I think that we've heard specifically in terms of signage issues, we've heard generally, just in terms of general issues, but signage issues were there, and I think we, we need to work through the signage issues before that gets through the council.
Well, to Hunter's point, let's expand this a little bit further. H.G. Hill's land basis is unlike if you went and bought a tract of land along Gallatin Road and had to pay today's market price. And with the new Build Twos, you're going to have more expensive construction costs because you're going to have less back of house.
Because you're going to have less what?
Back of house. So it's going to cost you more to build the structure. So if, if someone has respected--
Do you translate to people who weren't developed, the back of house?
Well, there's no, there's going to be less rear building that no one's going to see. So if, for example, a grocery store that the back, is at the back of the lot, you know, you can have less expensive construction than if it's up on the street and you really have no rear of the building. So if a respected developer like H.G. Hill, and I hate the fact that we continue to focus on them, but if they're saying that the cost structure doesn't work through the letter, then it gives me room for pause. Because if ABC developer comes in, then are we creating a structure where the rents don't support this? And I happen to agree with Rick's point about what comes first, the zoning in place or the tipping point. I don't know the answer to that, but I do think a five-and-a-half-mile stretch of road with very disparate lot sizes, very disparate lot depths, very disparate uses, maybe we're trying to tackle too much.
Let me ask a question because you're, you're with a company that develops, and the point you brought up is a back of the building. In the grocery store or in any commercial, you have trucks that come and unload there. If this building is up front along the sidewalk, then where, and you, your entrance is on the back with your pedestrians to shop, where do these trucks then unload?
And you ask a very good point, Jim. You know, they're going to have to unload on the sides. The loading docks become more expensive because they're less--
Whether the property allows it.
Less traditional. And oftentimes, you're going to get a retailer like a Publix or a Kroger who's going to say, we're not going to do this because we can't make our deliveries work with this. Now--
Where do they deliver at the Harris Teeter in Bellmead? Where do the trucks go to deliver there? I mean, that's, that's--
Sorry. In Bellmead, there's a Harris Teeter, it's a grocery store, and it's, it's up front, and it's got a parking garage for pedestrians in the rear, and they walk, they approach, I mean, some people can approach from the sidewalk, but some people can approach from the rear if they drive. So where do their trucks unload the load? Is it on the side?
I, I don't know. I think the best example is the Harris Teeter on 21st Avenue at Blair.
Which is on the corner.
That is actually built to the, built to the corner, built to the street, and yet the deliveries there are very difficult. They're oftentimes, you know--
But I've heard from, that it's the highest per capita Harris Teeter sales in the country. I think maybe something to that effect, this, it's success. I mean, it's quite a successful Harris Teeter.
By the way, I haven't-- Yeah, 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 we're going to let Stuart speak. Hunter, were you finished?
For now.
Okay. Stuart, I'm going to allow you 30 minutes.
Thank you. I'll try to keep it there.
That's not enough.
I, I was fine until Hunter got on here and he told me I had to talk longer. It's just, it's his fault that I talk so long. This is a very complicated thing in some ways and in other ways maybe not. I, I guess it's, to me, the, sort of the planning aspect to this is, it's kind of like, does this proposal that's before us, does it make sense from a planning standpoint compared to the other option of CS and the related older categories? It seems like that's the planning question, maybe the only question. I know that there's been a lot of concern about rushing to judgment. And then I realized as we were thinking today, this is a recreation with many specific zones over a long period of, long distance, but many specific zoning categories that does reflect to some degree with improvements, but reflects to some degree the rather long discussions of six years ago and other discussions more recently. This is not something that just hatched. It is an effort to take into account the fact that the SP is gone for reasons unrelated to anything we discussed here, as, as Councilman Anthony Davis pointed out. So the question for us as, as planners, is this better than the, what we see as CS, primarily CS? I think that if we had, I think these council members are perfectly capable of working and negotiating and thinking through and taking the temperature of their citizens and their property owners and weaving into their final product, specific changes that are needed. I think our job is a little bit simpler than that, which is the better zoning from a planning standpoint. I, I really am convinced that builders in this city and property owners have done a very good job with bringing us forward and building what they can to make, make it work in all sorts of instances. And, you know, we keep talking about H.G. Hill, which is sort of my favorite developer, my favorite builder because of what they've done in the 18th District, where they have consistently built quality products that the public endorsed and have used. And yet, I think Rick is right in terms of the zoning being so key. I don't think some of what they have built would have been built had they had to rezone. However, my, my big point is, there's a lot of discussion that needs to happen. I don't know that it has to happen here. I think it is specificity that these four council members may want to take, take to the next step. I'm prepared to, to let them do that. I, I believe that going back to the long existing zoning of CS might well be a mistake. And those are our two options. So that's kind of where I am.
I think that's the one thing you said that I would disagree with. It, I don't think it is our two options. You said, our job is to determine which is the better zoning. By far, I think this proposal is a better zoning than what we have now. All I'm saying is that perhaps there are nuances. There are elements of this five-mile stretch that might be considered different. There may be certain uses that could have certain standards applied through the UDO that would give exceptions or different, you know, and I'm not even sure the property owners, if, if, you know, I'm not sure the property owners necessarily understand what's still possible. I mean, if, if a grocery store builds up to the street, can they turn their front door to the back and have a parking lot back there? I don't know that we'd want that, but I think they could under this.
They have a door on the back.
So I'm not sure this is fully baked yet anyways. I mean, you know, if there, if we're going to force the buildings up to the street, let's make sure there are certain standards in place or certain opportunities that can work in the market and, and that we want to see in the community. So, but could a grocery store turn its side toward a parking lot on the side with its front door facing the parking lot? I think that could be done within this. Now, then we end up with maybe a back on a corner, and we end up with a side without any windows on the street. I'm not sure that does a whole lot for the pedestrian environment. So while the spirit of what we're doing here is consistent with the Community Plan, I'm not sure, for certain uses, certain areas, I'm not sure all the details have necessarily been thought through. And I know that was the benefit of the SP because we could put all these sort of standards in there. With the base zoning and then the UDO, this idea of changing it to these zoning districts with the UDO, I think I would be supportive of if, if the UDO perhaps addressed some of the concerns of, of the stakeholders.
I guess that makes some sense, and that's why I was thinking that some further changes might well be made at the council level. And this was brought to us by these council members who have stood up and said they want to continue to be part of the process. I don't think anyone's necessarily standing at the gate to run out and put a spade in the ground tomorrow if we defer this, but they could under CS zoning. If we defer this today, I believe that's the law of, what's the word for it? Pending legislation. Is that right?
Yes, sir, that's correct. If the board does not take action, the legislation that's been proposed is not pending. If the board takes action, it will then become pending, and no permits that are repugnant to the legislation can be issued.
Which, again, may not be relevant. Nobody may be doing this, but we might if we decide to stop the process here and defer it for a few months or a few days. We essentially reinstate today CS zoning. And that, that bothers me. Not that I think we're going to have a much-needed grocery store, which I hope they get very soon. That's not the issue. The issue is smaller things that would frustrate us in the future in terms of how that one, that part, that, that pike goes. But that's just something else to think about.
If we go back to a grocery example, if we go back to one that's at the corner of Blair and 21st, it actually has its door on, it has a facade on the front with, that is seemingly pedestrian-friendly. It's to the corner, but the door is actually in the rear. I know people in that neighborhood who rock to that grocery, who bike to that grocery, who park their bikes, and, you know, there's enough sidewalk on the side, they can park their bikes, they can come in the back door, there's loading. It, you know, there may be exceptions that, that ultimately work things through on real anomalies. And that's what I'm hearing from the staff, is they're willing to work through the anomalies. But this is, this is an opportunity to expand, the opportunities for landowners to expand the, the number of types of uses they can have on their property. They can have retail, they can have residential now, instead of just a CS limitation. I mean, we had to put, I mean, you remember when we had the core frame zoning downtown and you couldn't put residential in because it wasn't allowed?
You can put residential in all those districts now.
Now you can. And so, isn't that a good, that's a good thing. I mean, that's, that's exactly what I'm saying. We're expanding the opportunity to, to allow for different types of uses to come in there by doing this. And if, in respect for our staff, I'd like to point out that I think they have looked at lots of other cities. I think they've looked at a lot of opportunities that have already happened in Nashville and successes in Nashville. And I think they have thoughtfully put this together. And I think maybe our biggest problem is if we still have people who are upset and angry about it, we may not be communicating well enough what we're talking about. And, and so I think that's a, something we need to tackle maybe differently so that it's, so that we can all be coming to something, to this together. But I think there is a lot of the community who's for it. But I just think, too, what Stuart's point is, is that we're talking about a bigger picture of what we're going to allow on this corridor. So now I'm thinking it's, oh, anyway, I just, I'll stop here.
Yeah. Go ahead, Ray.
You know, I, I think I would feel more comfortable if, you know, we had all of the council members together on this. I mean, they're not at this point. There's business owners that, that don't want it. I mean, you see the UDO, you know, not, no UDO, and I know several of the council members are friends of mine that are for it, but they're, they're not all together. I mean, I think great zoning is built on compromise and lots of input. And it just, to me, it seems like we're not at that point. We're not ripe right now. And I don't think, you know, I, I agree with, with Stuart. I don't think somebody's taking a shovel out there. If we defer this thing, you know, for a couple of weeks. But I also think that, that, you know, the council members along with us have some, and Rick suggested several changes, you know, with the small lots, maybe some signage issues. You know, I just don't feel like it's fully vetted yet. And so my suggestion would be to ask this commission, I'm just going to ask, I'm not going to make a motion, because I want to make sure that everybody's on the same page. You know, maybe we defer this thing, you know, for, and I'm not sure if, I don't think it's an indefinite deferral, but I do think that it's at least a meeting or two to try to work out the differences. And if, if at the point, you know, I like going into things where everybody's together. You know, oh, this is a great idea. Like the Community Plans. Many times we have people lined up saying, this is a great thing. But that's not the case here. And I, I guess I'm just a little uncomfortable and concerned about that and that maybe, maybe it's not right.
I think, I don't, I just to address this from a staff perspective, I don't think that there's anything that can be gained by deferral. I think that Commissioner G's points could all be dealt with. Staff would be very, very opposed to going into the level of detail that he's talking about. I don't think it's appropriate for this corridor. Yeah. Could we dictate where the doors and windows and all that goes? Absolutely. I mean, that can be done, and I just don't think it's appropriate for this corridor. I think that one thing that we have, have learned through that regulations on the Gallatin Pike SP were, were to owners. And we've also learned that generally, these are fairly light development standards that are, that, that if somebody's building, they're going to build it and do things the right way. Could they turn their back on it? Could, yeah, absolutely. Are they going to turn their back on it? Probably not if we're making a million dollar, two million dollar, three million dollar investment. And I'm, I'm willing to, to trust the market to, to do that. I think we've got good developers and we see that. And I just, I just don't think there's anything to be gained from staff pursuing that. I think there are some minor things that we can work with the council members on. I would also say that in terms of the area north of Gallatin, we've worked very closely with Council Lady Bennett to get the zoning in there that those property owners want. It's not, this isn't a one-size-fits-all thing. It's very, it's very nuanced to get the types of zoning and the types of uses in there that those people are looking at. There's a trade-off in terms of, that that part of the community is doing in terms of trying to preserve some of the housing, but get uses in there that will allow retail and all that. And so, the changes have been done to do that. And so, you know, you could, could you cut it off at Brawley? Yes, but it wouldn't solve some of the problems that you're, you know, that you're, I mean, would you cut it off south of Brawley, I meant, in terms of that? But it wouldn't deal with some of the economic realities that that council lady has in her district.
Judy, could you have your microphone?
Yes, I was going to make a motion if we're ready.
I guess I'd just like to respond to one thing. I mean, if the staff were to sit down with the property owners, there may be some clarity. We heard, Rick, you say that people don't understand this, or the quote, you know, it was, "People are confused." And so, what's the harm in deferring this for a bit and make sure that our constituents on 700 properties are not confused? Why, what's, what's the rush, as one of the councilmen asked? I don't fully understand.
Well, I think, I think number one, it's getting the property owners to sit down and talk with you. It's, it's not as easy as, I mean, we have tried to sit down and talk to them. We have been at meetings, we have sent information out, we have had contact and phones out. And, you know, I don't, other than walking the corridor and trying to get the owner, it's, it's simply impossible to do. There are certain cases that we're aware of and we're working through those, I think. But I just don't think that there's a way, I mean, there's a lot of people that would not have any regulations at all. That's fine, I understand that. We've had 60 years of CS zoning and you got that up until about five years ago. People didn't seem to like that. I mean, the CS zoning, which is now the savior of everything, wasn't something that really created an environment that either the, that was very successful from a business perspective or from a neighborhood perspective. I didn't, and I just don't think that, I mean, I think the council members, I'm just gonna say this, have the capacity to know whether or not this is ready to go or not. If it is, fine. If it isn't, they'll hold it up. If Councilman Scott Davis doesn't think his district's ready, he can amend it out. There's not anything that prevents him from amending his district out of this and slowing it down. The other council members can go forward with that. And I think, I just think that from a, I don't know that there's much more of the planning commission to do. I think there's some things the council can do and they, it needs to be in their hands.
Let me ask, if it's deferred, you can defer it indefinitely or for one meeting or two? If it's voted up, moves on? If it's voted down, then when?
Well, it's moving and the clock is running from the council. So, you, basically, the commission can defer it as long as you want to. At the end of 60 days, it's soon to be passed.
Okay. I want a motion.
Could I, sorry Chairman, could I make one comment? I guess if we, if we vote it down tonight, my concern is that we need 27 votes at council to get it through. And we have one councilman who's opposed to this. And we have, you know, a, you know, I think a very important property owner and community member that, you know, is influential. And my, I don't believe that CS zoning is the right, is right for this quarter. And that's why I think a deferral to get us to this body all more comfortable with it and talking to the property owners and making sure people aren't confused and making sure people understand what they can and can't do under this, may yield a different result in a month. And, and then we would only have 21, need 21 votes to get this through council. So, that's, that's my concern.
I'd like to hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to defer two meetings.
Mr. Chair, maybe.
It's 30 days, not 60, that's right.
Yes, sir, one meeting.
I'll make a, I'll renew, I'll make a motion for, to defer one meeting.
One meeting.
Can I ask a question about what we would, what our goal, what we're asking of the staff or of the community or of the council people to have accomplished when we all return in two weeks or at whenever the next meeting is? I just feel like we, just to defer it and then be, to leave is not gonna be productive. We need to sort of set out what our goal is in deferring and what we want to learn to help us make a decision at the next meeting.
No, you're all right.
I didn't, I didn't hear a second to the motion before the discussion. That was my.
We got a second to it.
Okay.
Is one meeting, or it can be deferred, council?
Sir?
Is it just one meeting?
Right, it has to be within 30 days. So, I understand from staff that that's one meeting.
Two weeks from today. Two weeks. And is that assuming the, I mean, the council can defer? I mean, we can't control that, of course, but the council could, council members could certainly defer.
Sure.
If they're looking for our guidance.
They've got a motion, second to defer.
I still have a question. What is our intended goal between now and the next meeting that we want to try and learn and change, or to help us make a decision? What would, what would, if you all, if we're on the fence today and we want to learn something more, what is it we want to learn in order to make a decision?
I mean, me personally, being a former council member, generally what you, you know, when a, when a planning commission or a body defers something, you know, you expect the council members to get with some of the property owners that have the concerns.
I don't know about us at all.
You know, I mean, it's, you know, and there are, there were some great ideas, but, and you know, I, I mean, that's, that's my opinion. Now, you know, if, it's ultimately up to the council members to do that. They don't have to. You know, I mean, I had a zoning issue come before the planning commission and it was voted down, but then I went to the council and passed it, it was 27 votes. I mean, so it doesn't, you know, that's the deal.
I did want to point out one additional thing, that the council members have told us that they're gonna hold more community meetings before this is finished at council, so there will be other opportunities.
Well, Rick, would it be helpful for some of those points that you've made, that you thought the staff could adjust with council, to go ahead and discuss some of those in the next two weeks that we might, or is it language that you don't want to put in because it's too specific?
No, no, I think that some of those issues can be addressed. I think at the end, I don't think the, I don't, I don't think those are gonna be, those are the issues that, I mean, there's just people that, that prefer not to have any regulation and they're not, I mean.
Are we putting the onus on our staff to go out and meet with developers? Is that what we're saying, that we expect to happen in two weeks?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I think Greg's saying it's up to the council members. I'm just wondering, in 14 days, they have time to do that and get feedback? But I think we're limited then to just that one, one meeting deferral.
Well, then I'll go back to what Stuart was saying. That's, it's a, that's a political question about listening to the constituents in relationship to something that the staff has been working on for a long time. And if we're planning, what are we, you know, we're trying to make a decision about whether to expand CS zoning and to allow for broader uses in the zoning. We're talking about when buildings are torn down, how they get rebuilt with fairly general parameters but not specifics like the SP had. What are we gonna, are we gonna feel differently in two weeks about those big picture items?
So, I think that part of it was that.
We're gonna get votes for it.
Excuse me? The chairman?
I'm answering your question, Andre.
Yes, thank you.
I think part of the issue was that some of them felt like we were moving too fast. So, if you defer one meeting, is there enough time in there to accomplish anything? If you vote it down, then it's gonna cost, it's gonna create 27 votes at the council. And that may be the way to go if you want to slow it down. That'll slow it down for three or four months. Anyway, this can be brought back up at what period of time?
One year.
Even?
One year. Unless, unless council weighs it.
Well, but we, who originated this? I mean, if it's an individual, I understand that they have to wait a year, but is that the same thing to council?
I think it's on the bill. I don't think it's who's origin, I think it's the bill, substantially the same bill, I believe. Yeah.
Well, are we?
Was the applicant, was the, was the applicant the planning commission or the, it was the four council members, right?
Yeah.
So, does that rule still apply to the planning department if they have to wait a year?
No.
That's kind of a. Mr. Chairman, that's kind of a hypothetical question right now. I mean, there's no motion here or to reject it.
Right.
I understand. It has to be rejected in council, right?
Yeah. The motion here is to defer for a meeting, and you're quite appropriately questioning how much can be done in one meeting. But I think maybe, maybe that's what ought to happen right now, given the discussion, and see what can be done. If we find that there are no specifics and that it simply is an opposition from one prominent company that has wanted to defeat it, then, then that's that. I don't think that's what it is. I think there will be input back and forth. And if two weeks isn't enough, the council members can ask, ask us to continue to look at it, I guess.
Okay, we've got a motion, second to defer one meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries, deferred one meeting, and we will leave the public hearing open.
Is there something specific you want us to do?
I would say the council members that have the, remember the constituents that need to be, questions to be answered, if they try to do that in those 14 days.
And I, I would like, I mean, I know the staff will meet with anyone who comes to them, and that's important, but I just, you know, for my, I would like to see some of the property owners that have expressed specific concerns, meet with staff, make sure that those concerns are valid. Because, you know, it's referred to as a down zoning, whereas staff refers to it as an up zoning. You know, there's talk about not being at the table, but staff says we're at the table. And we may, at the end of the day, come down to just a clear disagreement on one thing the bill due. And staff may feel like it needs to be applied to every single parcel for five miles, and we may have property owners that disagree with that. And ultimately, we'll have to make that decision. But I would like, since we know that some of the folks who've reached out to us and expressed serious concerns and, you know, contradict what staff says, there's clearly not an understanding here. And I'd like for those property owners to have the opportunity to sit down with not only the council members, but the staff.
Yeah, could we have a, could we make, find a time to have a meeting with those, at least the four council people, as many concerns, property owners as can come home and as the staff, and put it nine days hours, far enough out so they have time to plan for it? I mean, I think that that would be really productive. Or do you think, in a meeting, or are you talking about individual meetings?
I just.
Just however it can happen.
I just am concerned that, you know, staff, that we haven't had the opportunity, for whatever reason. Someone decided not to show up, they're on vacation, you know, they don't want to be a part of the process. We don't, I don't know what that reason is. But let's give it two more weeks, give, you know, get some clarity to some of these things, see if there's some, any tweaks to this that staff, you know, would be willing to consider, whether it's on, you know, across the whole five miles or on certain types of uses or certain types of size parcels or certain areas. I mean, I don't know. I mean, I think there's all kinds of things that could address these concerns that I'm not sure we've even had the opportunity to, or that, you know, the conversations haven't been had. So, I just want, and I think it's, you know, it's, it's up to the property owners if they want to come talk to staff and the council members.
Mr. Chairman, I think that the council members should maybe have, want to say something. I mean, they probably know that, what, if they're gonna have a community meeting or whatever, I'd like to hear from them.
Right now?
Well, can we not hear from them? Is that not appropriate?
Yes, absolutely.
I mean, we always hear from council members.
Not after we've voted.
Well, I mean, this is gonna be an ongoing thing, Commissioner.
But, we're trying to figure out what we're, we're trying to accomplish.
So, is that a yes?
Yes, council, council lady, please.
Hi, I'm Council Lady Karen Bennett, and I represent District 8. I did not speak earlier because I've got a great cough, and I hope I don't start coughing on you. Somebody gave me a cough, man, I appreciate that. We have been working with staff to set up a meeting. We have a couple of people on vacation. We would like to meet with the community and the property owners when they're back in town and we can have the full staff there. But we have had planned that meeting, as well as I understood from Councilmember Westerholm, that also there's another group that's planning on putting together a big community meeting as well. So, we do have meetings planned. We are working in that direction. And HG Hills has been to every meeting that we've had and participated, so I'm not sure. I hope they come to the table and we can discuss more, but we've been in discussions with them, so that's about all I can say.
Do you know if any of those meetings are in the next, between now and our next meeting?
I'm not sure we can make it that fast. We'll try. How's that?
No, I just said, you say there's some that's scheduled, I'm not saying.
Well, we don't have the date set. We have been talking about where we're gonna do it, logistics and people getting back from vacation and trying to work those kind of things out, so.
Okay. Okay, we deferred this one meeting. I'd like to have a work session at 2:30 before the next meeting to get feedback from the staff and the council members or anybody from the public that'd like to attend that meeting, so we'd be prepared at that meeting to know.
We need to advertise it as a public meeting.
Good suggestion. Just a work session for us.
But work sessions usually are limited to the commission. If you wanted the public input, we can advertise it that way.
I think the work sessions, anybody can come and sit in that.
Yeah, this is for us to work in.
So, to the public, and if we, whoever's there at the public, we may want to ask them questions. So, I declare a meeting for a work session at 2:30 prior to the regular meeting 14 days from today.
And then, I think I heard you said that the public, the public hearing would stay open or would reopen at the next meeting or not?
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I think you had said before, you mentioned that the public hearing would reopen at the next meeting. Is that, did I understand that right?
I kept the public hearing open.
Okay.
Yes. Okay. We're ready for item number six.
Just for, just for clarity, are, is it the desire of the board to have a work session where there will be a public hearing or just a public meeting?
No, the work session, the work session is for the commissioners to hear back from the staff of what they've learned, what they've heard from the constituents or anybody that they've talked to at that meeting. It's, it's an open meeting.
Right.
It's public, the council members invite, he's welcome to be there, and the commissioners will possibly want to ask them questions to get feedback.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that it was a public meeting and not a public hearing. Okay.
We still got a call. Yes.
It's the Bransford Realty subdivision. It's a request for a final plat to create three lots, and the site is on Natchez Trace, a few blocks, two blocks to the west of 21st Avenue. Staff recommends approval of the subdivision. Existing zoning is RS, it's RS 7.5, which is, which permits single-family detached development only. The policy is residential medium, which recommends a residential density of four to nine dwelling units per acre. Because the subdivision is in, is in the RM policy, it is only required to meet the density recommendation of the policy, according to the infill subdivisions portion of the subdivision regulations, and, and not requirements for community character. This is because the residential medium policy is an older density-based policy and not a community character-based policy. And with this subdivision, the density of the surrounding block face will still remain within that density range of four to nine dwelling units per acre. And even, here's the subdivision, again, it's three lots, two lots going into three. And even, here's the subdivision, again, it's three lots, two lots going into three. Even though this isn't required to meet community character, the applicant has taken steps to be consistent with surrounding development. All three lots will be over 10,000 square feet in size, even though the RS 7.5 zoning only requires 7,500 square foot lots. The RS 7.5 zoning district would permit this site to be divided up to four lots instead of three, which is one more than, than there, than what is currently proposed. Also, the applicant has restricted vehicular access to the existing alley, even though street access would be permitted by the subdivision regulations because these lots are 50 feet in width. Staff recommends approval of the subdivision because it meets the requirements of the subdivision regulations and, again, is, is consistent with the density recommendation of the residential medium policy.
Thank you. This item is open for public hearing. That can be allowed 10 minutes, and you can keep two minutes back for rebuttal if you'd like, with the applicant and audience. Anyone here wish to speak in support? Is anyone wish to speak in opposition?
I'm Berkeley Allen, council member for the 18th district, and I live at 3521 Byron Avenue. I have a display if that's okay to hang out. I came planning to speak in opposition, so I've waited to that, to that spot. I have had some concern from my neighbors, simply because we have seen a number of tear downs of homes that we feel contribute to the character of our neighborhood. And as Greg has said, it's true that we're currently under the old community plan, but we are due for the new community plan weight ranking, rating, whatever you call it. We're just waiting in line behind the Nashville Next, and that's probably going to take another year or two. So I do feel like community character is an important thing to take into, into account. And what I've passed out there simply shows that most of the lots on that street are 60 feet. So I think the neighbors have some reason to be concerned, and I have spoken with the owner and the developer about our concerns, largely that deal with what would go on to these lots if the current homes are, are destroyed. He has, as, as he said, he's a hero. He is not just subdividing it into the four that theoretically he could, and I do appreciate that. And I also think that it's appropriate that only alley access is, is approved. I think that gives us some good protections. We have talked about having a community meeting so that we could come up with what we said, mutually agreeable street elevations that would be in character with the homes that are there. As you know, this is a historic neighborhood. This particular part of the neighborhood is not in the conservation zoning overlay, but the Hillsborough West End neighborhood in general was one of the hot areas in the assessment rankings that showed that most of, most of Davidson County had gone down in property values, but our, our area has gone up in property values. So clearly, people value this. The community character is also valuable. So based on that, what I would like to do, if I could, is to, is to make you aware that there is concern in the neighborhood about this subdivision. I'm willing to work with the developer on, on good faith that we can come up with a mutually agreeable site elevation, and would like for that to be part of the record. He does, he does good work. I've seen many of his homes, they are attractive. They tend to be larger than what I envisioned for this site. So we have spoken about perhaps looking at something, the typical homes around there are more like 2,500 square feet. I can't tie him down to his size, and I realize that, but I feel like that is the scale that you, you see currently on that street, and would love for that to be a good starting point for the discussion. So with that said, I want to, to acknowledge that I do have some neighbors and the Neighborhood Association that were concerned with the subdivision, would prefer that it not happen, but we realize that change is happening. If it does, we would like to be able to have some input in how that character, how, how the character of that is developed, and would therefore like that to be part of the record as y'all consider moving forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Ginger Hauser, 2510 Natchez Trace, and I'm, if you're looking at this, I'm the other number 70, right across from this lot. So, good to be before you again, and basically, I'm here to support what Councilman Allen is recommending, is at your next meeting, what I understand is going to be on your agenda, if you can validate this, Greg, is some other subdivision requests down the street on Sunset. It makes sense to me to look at all this at the same time. It's the same developer that will be back before you in two, two weeks, and the developer has agreed to kind of meet with the community and look at all of this together, and I think that makes a lot of sense. So Berkeley is correct. The overlay does not extend to this area. I did the other overlays. I did the downzoning to RS 7.5. There was not a community support for block captains to do the overlay back when Berkeley was heading that up. What we have seen as a result is because the other part of Hillsborough West End is in an overlay, and Ashwood and West London and Natchez Trace and Sunset are not, is all the tear downs are happening on those four streets. And what neighbors are starting to say to Berkeley is, oh, my gosh, let's do an overlay, let's stop all of it. So I think the reason I say that is to give some context into what I hope will be before you two weeks from now, is that neighbors are seeing a lot of change happen in a short period of time because the market's heating back up. They can't go to other parts of Hillsborough West End. They're all doing it on these four streets, and as a result, neighbors are sort of freaked out. So they're coming to Berkeley and saying, okay, now it's time to do an overlay and stop all of it. What I'm thinking might be the best course is what's in the middle. So I ask for a two-week deferral to allow us to talk, talk to the developer. Thanks for your time. Good to see you all.
Thank you. Council lady here in support of the two-week deferral.
I have to be mixed on this. I would love a two-week deferral. I shook with, I shook hands with the developer. He has promised me we will, we will have the community meeting, and he will work with me on the mutually agreeable site elevation. And if I can get that into the record, I, I know that that is not a totally binding type of, it's not as binding as a two-week deferral would be, but I have to keep my word, and I trust him to keep his word, and that what goes into that property will be something that, that we as a community can agree on. I would love a deferral. I'm not sure that that is in the best interest of the, of the owner, but I'm holding him to his word that he will work with me as much as he would as if he had that deferral. You guys work with that one.
Developer, would you like to make a statement?
I'm French Craig, I live at 2013 A. Castleman, and this is our site. And I do represent the owner that is in Alaska, and with staff recommendation, she is out in the wilderness and is unable to, unable to contact her on a regular basis. A two-week deferral would, would put her in a hardship. The approval of this is, the closing of the property is dependent on the passage of this, and so if we deferred it, it would create a hardship for her. We did, I did talk to.
What kind of hardship would it occur?
It is, I think, part of a trust that she has owned and trying to disperse for her children before she passes. Part of a getting to sell her property to move on to Alaska full-time. But I did, I did make the commitment to the council person that we would have a community meeting, we would agree upon elevations and street scene before we build, and I've, before you guys, and historical enough to know that if I don't do what I say I'm going to do, it'll be tough to get anything passed. So we will have that community meeting, and we will be able to, to come to some, some conclusion with the elevations on those properties.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in audit wish to speak in opposition, harbor and support? Signifies a motion to close the public hearing. Motion, second, close the public hearing, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Greg? Andre? Stuart?
I move we approve staff recommendation. No one's really actually, I think Berkeley explained that she's not asking us for a deferral, but the gentleman is very, I think, graciously agreed to meet and come to an agreement. So, so I move we approve staff recommendation.
Can I have a question before you go?
Yes.
Just because I'm remembering an issue, a situation recently where we were discussing the square footage of a use of a property, and we limited something that someone did based on their square footage. Do we have that? I know Berkeley said she can't do that.
That was a resoning. That was a resoning, the SP resoning that you put it as a condition of SP, you cannot do that.
I didn't think so, but I thought I'd ask.
Concerns here, the streetscape and the elevations.
I think, I'm sorry, but I think the main concern is the massing.
All right. So I got to go.
Is what the, the street scene, how it was.
Is that motion?
Not necessarily. How many square feet the house had. It's the way I understood it.
Okay, we got a motion, second to approve the staff recommendations, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Hunter, you got anything for start? Okay, Rick?
Several things. We do have an internal audit process that's beginning next week. It's their normal audit, but it'll take four months and a lot of staff time to be involved in getting all the information. This is one of the first one, I think, in about 12 years. They're kind of go through the, every department about every 12 years. So the next four months, we're going to be tied up a lot with the internal audit. Sherri West has resigned. Her last day is Thursday, the 15th, and she's taking a position with public schools. I want to point out that we have, in terms of Nashville Next, we have had six live meetings on the Be Nashville Next, Next Mayor, and appreciate, we had four of the planning commissioners attend at least one of those, and we appreciate that. We do have, however, on August 26th and August 27th, a series of meetings. I think Kelly will be getting with you. Joe Menoczi, who was one of the consultants that we hired, is doing his presentation on the math of smart growth and its impact on density and location decisions, and this is his analysis of where tax revenues are generated in terms of location and density. He's going to be making a presentation to ULI the morning of the 27th down at, at the Pinnacle. You'll be invited to attend that. He's also going to be doing an evening meeting that you can attend one of those, but this is probably one of the two critical speakers and, and critical analyses that are fundamental to everything that's winding up in Nashville Next. This one and the very next one with Arthur Nelson. It'll probably be in October, November, the time period. So far, we've had almost 1,000 people participate live in terms of our public meetings online. We've just gone online in terms of trying to get the priority settings, and so far, we've had 231 responses. The most, the highest ranked issue is transit, improve transit. 41% or four, over 41% of all respondents select that, and they can choose five. The next one is walkable neighborhoods and the green living. Those are the top three of the, the topics that we get.
What's the deadline on that vote?
It's up, what, another 30, 30 days, I think, the vote on? Yeah, I think it's, yeah, I think it's another 30 days or so on that. So you can go online and get that. We also have that in Spanish, and we're distributing a Spanish version of that survey, and it's going to go out the next day. Over the next two weeks, we've got nine events scheduled where we'll be doing presentations out there in the community. We're doing everything, this is a big month. We've got a number of staff members that are working Saturdays in terms of field work. They're, they're at Kroger grocery stores and various other places around town doing survey work and talking to the community. And I think that's, anything else you had, Jennifer? I think that's pretty much all I've got.
Could I, could I just reinforce what Rick just said about the Joe Menoczi presentation on the 27th? Especially for anyone who missed the Bill Fulton presentation, and I know there's a lot of different things that we're asked to go to or participate in and opportunities, and we have to pick and choose, but this issue of the cost, rev, tax revenue generated by different types of development in different locations is what he's going to hit hard on. You know, it has, I hope, you know, everyone would encourage their council member to be there as well, because I think it's, it'll be eye-opening. Thanks.